Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to welcome our staff to this afternoon's board meeting. And I'm going to get started, and that's okay with the rest of the board.
Yes.
It is now six P M. I call this meeting of the LaFer Independent School District to order that the records show that a quorum of board members are present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter five five one. Please stand.
Fill bow your heads for prayer, please. Loving Heavenly Father, you are a gracious God, and we pause before the start of this school board meeting to lift up our hearts to you in prayer and thanksgiving for all the many mercies to us throughout the past months and years. You are always with us. And to seek your face as we prepare to make plans for the future of our school. We lift each member of staff to you, each child as well, and every member of the board, and ask it for your continued blessings over each and every life, and that they would seek your wisdom and guidance, courage and strength in all issues and areas that touch their lives. Keep us ever humble before your throne and give us the integrity to stand up for what we believe. Lord, I have a special request this evening to please let us keep in prayer our former superintendent, Rich Winkie. So into your hands we place this meeting, trusting you to lead and guide our meeting tonight and protect our school in the future. To praise and glory, we pray this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of August twelfth, twenty twenty four?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August twelfth, twenty twenty four.
I have a motion by Mrs. Johnson, do I have a second? I have a second by Mrs. Martinez, all those in favor raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
The excited vote, motion carries for zero. Anyone for public comments? No ma'am, thank you so much. The first information item is Superintendent Performance Goal One, Activity One, Reading and Math Star.
Thank you, Board President, Board members. The first superintendent's performance goal we have tonight is Goal One, Activity One. And Goal One, Activity One states the superintendent will ensure resources are allotted and strategies implemented in order to increase the percentage of students attaining Approaches, Meets and Masters in Reading and Math. So specifically in the areas of reading and math. So what you have, the chart that you have in front of you is you have, even though we're comparing twenty-three and twenty-four, I did want to bring in twenty-two as well so that you can see what our scores look like for the past three years. And so the goal was to have at least fifty percent of our scores in each area increase. And so we had a total in Reading and Math of forty-five scores from third grade all the way up through English one, English two and Algebra one. And out of the forty-five scores, we had twenty-four scores that increased, seventeen that decreased, and four remaining the same, so which is a fifty-three percent. And so you can go down the line, for example, third grade math, we had seventy-five percent approaches compared to eighty-one last year. And then you can look at third grade reading language arts, seventy-eight, eighty-one last year. So this is no different than the scores that we have presented to you in the past. What we're looking at here again, and it's the goal of the principals, is to each year have more students attain the Approaches, have more students get the Meets, which is on grade level, and more students get to the Masters. And so that's where our Reading and Math.
So technically, you've met the goal for this.
Well, the goal of proficient, because we talked about it would be proficient if we were at fifty percent. So we did get the proficient. Are we where we want to be to exceed, absolutely not. That would be it, having seventy-five percent of our scores go up. So we're meeting, we are having our first day to meeting at the end of the first six weeks. I'll be going out to the campuses and we'll continue to work on increasing that percentage. If you look at the second slide, this is academic growth. And so while the goal itself doesn't say an overall growth, it talks about specifically the three levels. I did want to share with you, the district in academic growth went from sixty-seven to seventy-three. So we did have a higher percentage of students with academic growth. High school remained the same at seventy percent. Green went from sixty-nine to seventy. Remember that academic growth is only Reading and Math. We don't, we cannot, we cannot measure.
Science and social studies.
Correct. If you look at Sam Houston, went from sixty-six to seventy-nine, up thirteen percentage points. So they had a big jump. Vail from seventy to ninety-two, twenty-two percent overall growth. Dominguez fifty-six to seventy-five, huge jump. Dominguez had science that they struggled with, but their reading and their math, they saw significant growth. And then Sanchez from a seventy-three to an eighty-one. So almost all of our campuses saw growth overall. And so, and if you look at our students growing at the fifty percent, yes, you know, most of them, we have seventy to seventy-three percent to ninety-two percent showing that growth. But this particular goal talked about getting, increasing the Approaches, Meets and Masters. And so, but I did want to share with you that we had growth overall. Any questions?
I just want to mention, or just correct me if I'm wrong, the STAR two point oh, it was, this was, it was the first year that the test was different. So as I recall.
We're not comparing apples to apples.
Right, but they had omitted the multiple choice, right?
No. No, what they added is there's writing now, it used to be writing only at certain grade levels. Now there's writing and short answers across the grade level. And then in math, and help me here, Mr. Fodis, excuse me?
There was a gridable for math. You might be referring to the different types of questions now?
Because I know, I know the content was going to be different, but as a conference, I believe they mentioned that there was no longer going to be multiple choice, that they had to kind of solve.
It's a combination, is that correct? It's a multiple choice, but then also they have gridable, so it's a very different type.
And that's what I was going to, you know, that's what I was leading to, you know, to get this growth with a new test, with new, you know.
No, yes. We're very pleased with the growth overall, with a brand-new test with writing. We just had some PD that Ms. Vento and Mr. Fodis talked to us about for writing. And, and you know, that's why the state right now has not submitted the A through F because AI is grading the writing now. And if AI doesn't see certain words, then it goes to a person. We had that discussion overall about what we need to do to increase the writing. But yes, it was different type of items, different type of test. And to see, for example, the growth from seventy to ninety-two or fifty-six to seventy-five, even with the different items.
We're still going.
I think our staff, our staff did a great job.
Good job, everybody.
I have a question, no. I shouldn't say no, it doesn't sound very good, but I just have a question. I know, I know we're comparing, we're not comparing apples to apples. And we understood that all last year, but for next year, we will compare apples to apples, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Across all tests. I just, this is leading to my next question. I know some levels we went down like ten points or more. I think it was like three areas. So is it because not understanding the teaks or is there a reason? Like I said, I know it's apples, not apples to apples, but still, because other areas we did go down that much.
Right, now as far as for next year, comparing the apples, do you have a vote on?
Yes.
As far as comparing apples to apples, the subject that we'll probably have to be looking at carefully would be science. Science is having teaks. Just to put it in perspective, this year's third graders will be the very first group, this year's third graders will be the very first group when they get to fifth grade, that they will then test all the new science teaks. So slowly, they're going to be implemented, to be fair to the students and of course, to be fair to the teachers. So that would probably be the only test that we need to look at carefully every year. And then we are going to have to then create those tests because the state is not going to have anything to release because, for example, this year's fifth grade test will have the fifth grade teaks only.
And what we did find, remember when we showed you the comparison with the region and the state?
Right.
So where we made dips of ten points or five points, we found that we saw similarities with the region and the state. And I know. So we had the side-by-side, and I'll send that in the Friday, the weekly update, just to show you all again. When we went down, we noticed that the state went down. English one is an area that Mr. Fodis, that y'all were just at the ILN meeting at region, and they said across the state, that English one went down. And that's an area we went down. Another area was.
Fifth grade as well.
Fifth grade.
Fifth grade, fifth grade and English.
It was true, we actually went up.
In reading language arts, region-wide, statewide.
I left my notes.
Yes.
Fifth grade and English one were the ones that were affected the most with the automated scoring system that they implemented.
Fifth grade what?
Fifth grade reading language arts. When we look at fifth, what I'm saying is as a whole, statewide and region-wide, our fifth graders and our English one were affected the most.
No, and your English one, I had sent you some.
I just wanted to make notes. But you answered my question, sir, you know, because you did mention maybe we noticed a dip, like ten points or more, there was a dip across the board.
statewide.
Did you answer my question? Okay, thank you. Are we done with the first goals? Yes, okay. The next item is super, thank you, sir. The next item is Superintendent's Performance Goal One, Activity Two, Science and Social Studies Star.
So Science and Social Studies is an area that we have been working on. It's an area that, that we feel that we have struggled with a bit. If you look at our scores in Science and Social Studies, we test Science in fifth, eighth grade and high school. And so we have a total, and then Social Studies in eighth grade and high school. So we have a total of fourteen, fifteen scores when you look at Approaches, Meets and Masters because we have a total of five tests. And so out of those five tests, we had seven that showed increase. Eighth grade across the board and Science had increases last year, not to where we want to be, but they did have increases in the three areas. Fifth grade, we had increases in Masters, not Approaches and Meets, but in Masters. Yes, and then, yes, and then if you look at high school, even though in U.S. history, we're at ninety-seven percent, but the year before, we were at ninety-nine. So that's a decrease, but it's a decrease when you are at ninety-seven percent. And a decrease when you're still at for Meets, fifty-nine percent, but the year before, it was sixty-five. And so, but nevertheless, you know, the goal is the goal, and it says to increase. And so when you get to ninety-nine, it's kind of hard to have those increases. So here, we had forty-seven percent increase. Yes.
Any question for Mrs. Fodis? Thank you, Ms. Fodis. And now, where we started is Superintendent Performance Goal Four, Activity One, Need and Conflict Resolution.
So I want to thank the principals at the campuses and your staff. One of the things we really tried to do the first three weeks, and I gave you a list of every single campus. Every principal sent me what they were doing, I cut and pasted and put it on that sheet for you. And so you have a detailed list of what every campus is doing. And this is just kind of a summary of some of the things that we are doing. But one of the things that we wanted to do is make sure that our parents and our students understand the difference with somebody bullying them, being mean to them, being rude to them. And then what do we do instead of bullying somebody when we have a problem with somebody? What's a better way? And we talked about conflict resolution, what's a better way to communicate rather than being like that? And so we've had counselor meetings with groups and our health classes at the junior high and high school. We have had some de-escalating strategies with them. Our athletic coaches have had conversations about bullying at junior high. He's starting a kindness squad, ordered these bright yellow shirts, I think, and they're going to start this new initiative there. We've had PE presentations all the way down, all the way across the district, posters around campus. We've started restorative practices in circles. And so they're having discussions with students, talking to other students about behavior, and then just our administrators talking. And so, and again, what I emailed to you, and you have a copy as well, it gives a little bit more information. We felt it was important, and we felt it was important at the campuses to, at the very beginning, target that. And just because we did it at the beginning doesn't mean it's not something that we're going to have ongoing, but we just wanted to get ahead of it a little bit this year.
Good job.
Any questions? Thank you, ma'am. The next item is Item B, Collaborative Autism Grant, twenty-four, three, twenty-six, Innovative Services for Students with Autism.
Good evening, we're regarding the president, Mrs. Fodis. We're just bringing some information to you guys regarding our collaborative efforts with Harlingen T A S D within our district for the application process for the autism grant. A couple of years ago, both Harlingen applied for it independently, and we applied for it, and we both didn't get it. And when we read a little bit more of it, it says you get a better chance of getting these, this grant if you do it in a collaborative effort with another district. So last year, we came together to put together this grant, and we got approved with, for the autism grant. And this is from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six. There's three major components to the grant. Of course, it's to bring awareness to our community, supports for our parents, you know, additional training opportunities for our staff, you know, giving, just giving them as much information as we can. Some of the other components are actual educational hubs that we can break to the district. We got approved for five total hubs, three will be housed in Harlingen, and two will be housed in our district. One of ours will be a social-emotional behavioral hub for students, and the other one will be an upgraded sensory hub. Fortunately, we have sensory rooms across the district. Harlingen is still struggling with that, so that's where they're going to focus their hubs in. But our needs were slightly different than theirs. But with this, with these hubs, we're hoping to appoint one of our teachers as the coordinator for the hub, getting together with other teachers, the students and the campus, and see what the needs are specifically for that student population on their campus, and they can work together to create these hubs. The, the goal is that the educational hub is up and running by spring of twenty twenty-five. So as soon as we get it here, then we can go ahead and start moving on to getting these classrooms set up. On top of the hubs, like I said, it's additional support for our community, for our parents. So we will collaborate with Harlingen for, with different current school groups, sessions, PDs for, for community and provide childcare and transportation as needed on both ends. For our educators, we will have a training hub, which will be housed in Harlingen, but we will have access to it. And we'll have time slots of when we can take our staff, when time's appropriate, to participate in the professional development with Harlingen, or if it's not convenient, when it's convenient for us. So we're excited to be able to bring this, you know, to the district. The grant writer who actually helped us, she was a graduate of LaFeria, so she was very excited to be able to help, you know, her current employment district, but then also the district that she came to school in. So, yeah, that's, we just wanted to bring that to you guys. And these educational hubs will be a little bit more upscaled than what we're accustomed to for our sensory rooms. Because with our sensory rooms, we kind of, you know, pick our brains with others and we scale it to our needs. But we will have a twenty thousand dollar budget for each room, so a total of forty thousand to put these hubs. And the teachers that do coordinate this will get compensated for the extra time that they put in for this, based on our extra time pay rate. Any questions?
Oh, that's very exciting. Good job. It's awesome.
And that's for the elementary, is there anything?
Yeah, so it's going to be based on what our needs are. For sure, we're going to do one at our elementary, and we're going to focus one at our secondary level. Depending on the space and what we're thinking, that will dictate whether it's at Green or at the high school. But, you know, starting tomorrow, we can start collaborating with our teachers and see where is the need the most for our secondary level. So we'll have one for each.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Vento. There are six items in the consent agenda, the monthly tax report, unemployment compensation insurance for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, approved members to the LaFer I S D School Health Advisory Council Shack for twenty-four, twenty-five, master interlocal agreement between LaFer I S D and Region One Education Center, an amendment to performance appraisal evaluation for teachers, and discussion and approval to amend property casualty insurance contract. Do you have a motion to approve the items listed on the agenda? I have a motion by Mrs. Montalvo, do I have a second? And a second by Mrs. Martinez. It's been moved and seconded to approve the items listed on the consent agenda. All those in favor, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries for zero. First item under Items to Consider and Possible Action is a discussion and consideration to adopt a twenty-four, twenty-five tax rate resolution.
Thank you, Mrs. Castillo and Board members. We bring forth our recommendation tonight for the twenty-four, twenty-five tax rate. You have a purple folder of information that I wanted to share with you. So the top sheet is our, is our proposed tax rate for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. It's point seven five five two cents for the purpose of maintenance and operation, and point two zero zero eight three for our purpose of debt for the school district, with the total tax rate of point nine five six zero three. If you look at the second sheet, you can see that you have a twelve, thirteen-year history of where we have been with our tax rate. Back in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, our total tax rate was a dollar thirty-three, and we are now at ninety-five cents. So it's the lowest that we've had in the last twelve years, and there's a chart quite below it. We also showed, I provided you with a copy that was in Valley Morning Star in June. At that time, that we put in the Valley Morning Star, we believed that our, our tax rate would be about what it was the year before. But as you can see, this school year, our tax rate is, that we're proposing is point nine five six oh three. This is a reduction of point zero zero two cents. So it's actually what we thought it was going to be, it's a tad bit lower. And so that's always a good thing. So it is our recommendation that we propose that we adopt the twenty-four, twenty-five tax rate resolution.
Do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam President. I move we adopt the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five tax rate resolution.
And do I have a second? Is it moved and seconded to adopt the twenty-four, twenty-five tax rate resolution? Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries for zero. The next item is discussion and possible action to approve the tax discount resolution for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Thank you, Mrs. Castillo, Board members. We bring forth the tax rate resolution tonight. As been, as, has been in practice at LaFer I S D for the past years, the board allows taxpayers a discount if they pay their property taxes early. Three percent discount is paid by October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. A two percent discount is paid by November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And a one percent discount is paid by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So we recommend approval of the tax discount resolution.
Do I have a motion?
Yes.
I have a motion by Mrs. Martinez, and a second by.
Second.
And a second by Mrs. Johnson. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the twenty-four, twenty-five tax rate resolution. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, say aye. Motion carries for zero. Next item is, discussion and possible action to approve the campus improvement plan for the school year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Good evening, Board President Castillo, members of the board, and Mrs. Fodis. Tonight, we bring before you the goals, the campus goals and the objectives in the individual campus plans. It is our recommendation, or the recommendation of the administration for approval of the campus improvement plans.
So we provided you a pen drive, and I also have hard copies that we all want to look through these. But we provided, Mr. Fodis and the principals provided you all the goals and objectives. So as per board policy, what the board approves is the goals and objectives of the campus improvement plans. And so they matched, they did a needs assessment, and based upon their needs assessment, each campus principal is proposing these goals and objectives, and they review it through the, throughout the year, right?
Three times.
Three times a year, just to see if they are meeting all of the objectives.
Madam President, I move we approve the campus improvement plans for the school year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
We have a motion by Mrs. Johnson, do I have a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the campus improvement plan for the school year twenty-four, twenty-five. Any further discussion? I do have a few questions, if that's okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Some were writing their goals based on needs and some were on approaches, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
They're just dependent on the campus.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so if I read correctly, I didn't mean just to pick on Sanchez, but I saw that she said three percent. So she's going to go from whatever the Meets was this year, next year, let's say I'm going to say thirty-four in Reading, to thirty-seven, is that correct?
The goal would be for a thirty-seven.
Okay.
If that's a made-up number, yes.
Yeah, there's a made-up number, I'm not sure what it was before, okay, just wanted to make sure. And I believe for Green, you used Approaches, sir, correct?
For, for which one?
For the increase, for, for Reading and so forth. All I was going to say, sir, those are pretty, your expectations are pretty high.
Well, we're trying to hit, because Approaches was supposed to be like our ninety percent.
Yes, yes, yes.
And so we tried to hit that eighty, ninety on Approaches.
Right, yeah.
And then fifty, sixty in our needs.
No, and I studied it because for Reading, you got an eighty, and you want to go to an eighty-five.
Yeah.
So I'm commending you for that, sir, having those high expectations, you know, so rather aggressive, rather, you know. And I'm glad you're doing that, I'm glad you're doing that. I, I did, and I don't know how to say this tactfully, I did have a concern about Science, okay? Because I did notice that his score was a forty-eight, and he put five percentage points. I mean, I'm going to approve, obviously.
Is this Dominguez?
Dominguez, yeah, even with size, which was in the forties, you know.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not sure, but.
We are doing some, he is doing some different things, some of the things that he is doing. One, or the very first one, is that they are now in teams. Whereas before, every year had changed at Dominguez. This year, there's three Science teachers. Those three Science teachers now have conference period together. Those three teachers are now, are going to professional development at Region One, based on their needs. For example, they, they already had one training last week, sorry. They're having another one this week at Region as well. They're all going together. One of the things that was happening last year is because one would go, because twelve teachers were teaching it.
Right.
So that is a difference. So that's a difference. Another difference, or something that's different that he is doing this year as well, trackers. And some of the other campuses are doing that as well. So what they're doing is they're either giving a weekly test, a bi-weekly test, or every three weeks. And the teachers have to report or give those scores to their district. For Science班, it is every three weeks. Math and reading is bi-weekly or weekly. So that is something that he is doing as well at Dominguez, to track the Science scores. So it's not waiting until right before the benchmark, or benchmark number one. So that is something that is different.
That's different also.
The weekly tracker, Region One PD, they themselves also invested in Summit K twelve. Summit K twelve, they had trained last week as well, something that they can use to supplement with what they already have.
And I'm glad you brought it up, the staff developed, because I did see in the Green, what is it called? Campus plan, I didn't see the Dominguez, I wondered, and there is stock development, oh, no, but that's okay.
There is, and that's where I'm supporting them, so either I will help them pay, or I help, and, and, you know, we're helping the Science and the Social Studies, that's, that's the area of need. We've already spoken to Mr. Lway out as well, that if he needed some help or support financially there, that's where I can help him. But yes, ma'am, they are going to PD. The one that they're going to attend next, this week, all three are going. Whereas before, it was one, and then they have to bring it back, and yes, that's good, and they can share best practice, but when all three are there together to hear it.
It's hard to share with twelve other people, it really is. But it's best to keep it, you know.
So the structure has changed, and all three have conference period together, so that allows for better planning.
And as you saw our score, we are concerned about the, you know, the percentage of Science compared to where we were in Social Studies, when we're not making increases.
No, but I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Fodis. All those in favor, raise your hand or say aye.